Alright, so we said last night we were gonna get involved in the audit process. Um, I still have not met with Lisa. I will try to do that the this week coming up or the next. Um, I've kind of given myself a deadline. It's not her fault, it's my fault. Um, I've, I've taken another job and I've been involved in that, so.
What's the audit process?
Um, we are gonna audit the U D O. What we're gonna do is go through the U D O, section by section that we're responsible for.
Yeah.
And we're gonna use this as our guideline. This is the um, table of authorized uses.
Okay.
So, we just wanna make sure we go through the U D O. We're looking for-
Do you have the updated version of the U D O?
I think this is, isn't it?
I don't know.
This is from April.
Okay, I'm gonna look at that one.
I don't remember, I was changing it after that.
I don't have any printer.
Um, but we're gonna go through each section, section by section. And we're looking for any language you know doesn't matter. We're trying to get any redundancies out. Um, if you see language that you think, wait a minute, this could be a little bit more plain, this is, this could be less legalese and more normal, we could fix that. Um, if you see any typos, there could be anything in there.
So dub it down a little?
Yeah, we're, well, we're just kind of auditing the whole thing and we, we did the land use plan last year, we redid that. Um, so it's time for us to start looking at the U D O. We've done a lot, a lot of stuff in the U D O in the last year. We wanna make sure that there aren't discrepancies, like one rule doesn't fight against another. If we've got something in the table of uses, do we have that in here as well? Um, there's one thing that I found, um, already, uh, that we don't have anywhere in our, in our stuff. It's something silly, um, but it's not in, it's not addressed in the U D O.
Oh, and you just distributed that?
Um, this is in, this is part of your, it's in the, um, if you go to the village of Foxfire.
Oh.
And you go to ordinances?
Yep, if you go to ordinances.
And then the last thing in, in, uh, what is it, twenty-one?
Mm-hmm, and it should be the appendix table in twenty-one.
Article twenty-one?
Okay.
Is the last, is the appendix here?
Yeah, so it's, everything's there digitally.
Okay.
I, if, if I don't distribute it, it's widely available. That's it.
Okay.
You know, if I brings, if I send you like links or something to print out, that means it's not in our U D O. But if, if we're talking about like the table of, uh, of uses, um, let's see.
Okay, shouldn't we call to, to order, record members, approve of minutes?
Yeah, we should do all that. We got, we jumped, I did call us to order at five fifty-nine though. But go ahead and record, and then we'll go with the minutes. Sorry about that. See, this is what happens when you let me be in charge. You gotta-
You're good.
Pump the brakes!
I'm just bringing you master. Okay.
Pump the brakes! And then Teresa sent us our minutes. Um, we're gonna be approving the March minutes. We've had those since March.
Oh, so we're on the April minutes?
Um, there were no, because we didn't have a meeting.
Oh, okay.
There, there was no forum in April.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody got those up?
Well, I mean, I, oh, yeah.
You have.
I, I have the copy of that. You guys have the-
We did, um, I would like to visit training dates again at some point, um, to see if we can all get on the same page. We're just gonna have to be in the workers here.
Okay, so the code of ordinances, what chapter are we looking at then?
Um, let's go through the, the minutes first and approve these and then we'll get over there.
Okay.
Did you already record members?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I have a motion to approve the minutes. I've looked over, everything looks good. I got a second.
Okay, I, I'll, um, move.
Okay.
And you're seconding?
Yes.
We both have the same initials.
Do we?
Yes.
I did not notice that.
So if I put DJ, DJ, it says I come-
It's a tea jar for me. Alright. And give me just a moment, let me pull up, just so I can make sure I'm all text.
Alright.
Let me get my agenda in front of me.
Um, with this, uh, the only thing that I ask you is with dispensing, remember you were going to add some visuals?
Um, I did, and-
Can you send me so that I can-
I thought we did, I sent it to Lisa, um-
Well, but, okay, so, but, uh, when I sent her the minutes, it's gonna be an attachment.
Yep. Um, actually, did I? I thought I sent that to you guys already.
Uh-uh, I didn't any.
Whatever it is that you're attaching to the fencing thing.
Alright, give me one moment. I will send you all that right now, 'cause I have it right in front of me. Alright, let me go back. I'm gonna find your-
Yeah. I think there was like some, you showed it to me and it was like, like a table kind of thing, and then an example, something for the example.
I'm gonna send it to all of you right now.
Alright.
Hold on one moment, let me get. It says sent, so it just went to everybody. I apologize for that. I thought I sent that already to everybody. But if you wanna see what it looks like, that's what it ended up looking like at the end.
So nice, so easy to understand.
Yeah, there were, was there like an example that you did too?
Yep.
Okay.
All of that is there, and then there's the wording change.
Nice. Love that.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, then you have a section of public comment, no, no?
Um, no public comment tonight. That is okay, but we do welcome it.
Okay, so we're going to new business?
Mm-hmm, and that is the U D O. So, let's get everybody to the table of authorized uses. If you go to chapter twenty-one under the U D O, if you're in that Foxfire Village, and then you go to chapter twenty-one, all the way to the bottom, after twenty-one dash sixteen dash one, if you click that appendix A, that is the table of authorized uses. And we probably should print those out just to have, because we're gonna be bouncing back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. As we go through each section, um-
Sorry, I'm just kidding, it's, it's under-
Oh, no, you're fine.
It's, it's under village ordinances?
If you go, yeah.
Okay.
If you go under village ordinances, and then go to the U D O.
Okay, and then go to the U D O, it's kind of in the middle of the-
Chapter twenty-one.
So after the U D O, this is giving me-
Look for chapter twenty-one.
Code comparative table. Three different code compare comparative tables.
No, 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 you're, you need to be in chapter twenty-one.
I am. Says chapter twenty-one.
Okay, click on it. So first you have to click on it and get it.
It's giving me these-
No, 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 that's, it's, you're not getting the dropdown. There you go. There's your articles.
Okay.
And then authorized uses is right there.
No, that, you're not in the, go, okay, let me see.
Thank you, you're welcome.
It's the village of Foxfire.
Yeah, but it, it, don't go that way. Go to ordinances.
Yeah. I went to village ordinances and that's what came up.
No, no, go to the village where site.
Um, to the Foxfire Village site.
To the Foxfire Village site.
This.
That doesn't look-
Oh, 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 wait a minute.
I think you might get another Foxfire.
Uh, hang on, I just had it up here.
Should look like this. Should be the town hall.
Okay, I think that's about good.
And then you find ord- ordinances.
And then right in the, in the blue tab, there's village ordinances.
This one?
Yes.
Yep, and the blue tab with the little, little file.
Yeah.
Village ordinances.
Click on that.
Yeah.
And then when you have the list.
And then you should get to like this-
Browse table of contents.
Yeah, and you won't have this part on your phone, you'll have this.
Let me see.
He has to click that-
Let me see.
Drop.
Browse table of contents, yes.
And it is gonna be a little difficult on your phones.
So here, find twenty-one.
Uh, okay.
Which is right here.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a printed version of the whole U D O?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I do for, I do for, um, Carthage, 'cause you assigned me to Carthage for everything, so I printed their entire-
Wow.
Package, so that anything she asked me to reference for Carthage, I already have it.
You have it. Alright, so we will, ours won't be that sick, it will be half of that. Um, but I think it would be good-
It's like this.
For everybody to have a printed version or a laptop. Whichever one you wanna do, but we-
No, I like having that.
I think printing is nice that you can write on it.
But I have to replace pages because we have no-
We update and stuff, yeah. And then, let me check real quick to see what has not been caught up. Do we have anything?
I like your case, where did you get that case?
This?
Yeah.
Oh, where did we get anything? Amazon.
You gotta show me, because my-
I'll send you the link.
Yeah, please do.
So Teresa, that, what you printed there is this?
Yep, that's the whole thing, and it's not that much, yeah.
Okay, when I first came, I asked for a copy, she gave me a copy, because I'm old-fashioned, so I-
Tab it out, too.
I can't look it up on me.
Okay.
So I, I asked her to print it for me and she did.
You asked Lisa to? She'll print it for us? Okay.
But this thing doesn't have a table, so I have to, but the table has been updated. And actually, this has been updated, you know, and what I have, it's been updated too, so.
Um, just getting real quick to see and make sure we don't have anything that has been added in the most recent-
Well, I mean, the whole thing, like the provisions, authority, all of those things are not gonna change.
No, 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 and, and I think we'll slip through those pretty fast. Um, I do, I think we should go through every section. Um-
Yeah, I mean, you got the U D O, but we gotta do the whole thing.
Yeah.
So.
So if we start with general provisions, um-
So forget that table, go back to chap, to the, to the article one. Before we do that.
Is it ea, let me ask you guys this, 'cause I'm indifferent. Is it easier to just use this as our guide and go down this?
But that, this doesn't have-
Because it's gonna bounce us all over.
I know, but this is not, that, this thing doesn't show up there.
It does, because what you would do is, so if we're talking about single-family detached,
No.
to make sure that everything is there, you would search it.
Yeah, but you have to actually get to that section in order to-
But that's what I'm saying, like, do you wanna bounce around, or just go section by section?
Okay, since we haven't had training, I think that it's better that we go to the document and I think, I just-
Section by section.
Kind of like, in general, you don't have to really-
I'm fine with that.
You don't have to, you know, go through each one in detail, so that this gives you a chance, right?
To know what each section was.
Because I've already read the whole things.
So, so what we're doing now then, what you're describing is understanding what each of these categories is.
I think we're, well, you're gonna gain an understanding of them anyway as we go through, but really, what my goal is, is to audit the U D O and to take out any redundancies, to fix any typos, to really clean it up, so it's nice and succinct. And, you know, like we said before, if there was a section, like if we get through a section and we go, wait a minute, that doesn't apply to us anymore, we need to fix this, we need to spend some time on this, that's what we would do.
Can you start with, what the heck is this up here?
Sure. These are your zones. All your zones are up here.
Okay.
And if you want, we can do, um, we can go to-
I think start with the definitions of each of these.
And, and that's, and you're gonna find them in here.
They're gonna be in there, yeah, they're all, everything's gonna be in this chap, that's kind of where we live, is in chapter twenty-one. All of, that's our U D O, the Unified Development Ordinance. We say a lot of acronyms, but that's where we,
Okay.
that's where we really spend all of our time is in that U D O. We do not mess with code. Code and ordinances are really above that U D O. That's, that's law and legal. Um, the law, the law enforcement, the police department, that's where they live, in the code. We live in the U D O, which is more, um, the planning and zoning piece of it, uh, housing, um, yards, fencing. All of those things that are not necessarily, um, like, legal things. These are things that are, you know, guidelines we set. That's where we, where we kinda have all of our stuff at.
Let me ask you an off-the-wall question, 'cause if someone unilaterally violates an aspect of this U D O-
Which one? Oh, the U D O?
Yeah. Who, who then challenges them?
The, well, what would typically happen is someone would complain and say there's a violation.
Yeah.
And once the complaint is made, and I don't know how the complaint comes in, that's the, that's with the U, with the administrator, the administrator polices that, and they would set a fine. Um, you can get fined. Um, I don't know what all the repercussions are. Um, I'm a rule follower.
But you have, you have to have someone complain. I mean, if someone, like, when I first came, it was the best of all hoop.
Pretty much, pretty much.
But if nobody complains, they get away with it.
There you go. If nobody complains, you get away with it. And that's just the way it is. And, and sometimes, I mean, how, let me ask you this. How many times before you came into this board, did you pay attention to the U D O? Did you read it when you moved here?
Uh-uh.
Did you read it when you moved here?
Zero.
Zero. So, that is the majority of people that move here.
Yeah.
They don't read the zoning laws, they don't read the U D O, and they just assume that they can come into the neighborhood and it's not gated. So if you move into a gated neighborhood, there's this perception, oh, I know, there are community rules I have to follow.
Yeah.
So, when you move into a, a municipality, you don't necessarily think, especially because it's a small municipality. But make no mistake, this is a municipality. We have a, a state-of-the-art police department and a town hall. It's still a very small village municipality. It's not Aberdeen, it's not Southern Pines, but it still has the same type of, of guidelines. But ninety-nine percent of the people that move into this neighborhood from somewhere else never, especially if they move from out in the county, like if they're out in a land somewhere, they've never had any zoning laws or any that, that anybody, you know, unless they had to go get something for a permit. Um, they absolutely don't look at those laws and they don't, they don't know. So a lot of times, if you make a complaint, Lisa will call them and go, hey, this is, this is the section of the U D O that you violated, or send a letter, I think she sends letters too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this is the section that's violated and this is why, and if they would like to apply for a variance, they could do that, or they can come and try to plead their case, which nine times out of ten, that is not gonna go anywhere.
So-
I'm sorry. No, I wanted to give you an example. We were working on fencing. That section that we worked on was part of this.
Okay.
So, do you, I don't know if you remember, that somebody came and they said that somebody knew had moved into the area and they put this fencing, okay.
Very expensive fence.
We don't know exactly how it got known to the town, but then they were cited or whatever, okay, so that section-
And they were told that either, either, I, I think, I don't know exactly how it came out, but I think there was a, um, there was a conversation between them and the council and Lisa, the administrator, um, about either modifying the fence or taking it down. And it was brand-new, very expensive. I think they paid like fifteen, twenty thousand for that fence.
Yeah.
It was a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, so that section that we worked on, we find, and I, I went into, I guess it went to council first? Did it go to council?
Which one?
The fencing.
Uh, I don't know if it's made it there yet.
Alright, so it goes to council, council is the one that actually approves, we just read it.
Right.
Okay, and once they approve it, it's gonna get rewritten from here. And that, and we worked on a lot of other things in here.
Yeah, I remember that discussion about the spacing and-
Yeah, but that's, that's kind of what prompted that discussion.
Yeah.
Um, there were so many violations of fences, we had a, we had, since twenty-twenty, there's been a huge boom, and I was part of some of it too. Um, lots of people moving here since twenty-twenty. Um, there was just this big housing boom, lots of building houses, lots of people moving and, you know, buying houses, and with that came a lot of fencing issues. So Lisa was the one that gave, a lot of our, um, a lot of our motivation comes from Lisa going, hey, here's what I've got coming to me a lot and is driving me crazy, I'm spending all this time explaining our fence code or our fence zoning laws to everybody, when it could be simpler, and if you would put something in there to make it easier. That's, that's the full motivation of why we worked on that.
Okay, let me ask you another-
Sure.
Off-the-wall question, completely, I mean, in the neighborhood that I live in over here, everybody has nice lawns, it takes care of it, there's one house that's just discussed,
Yeah.
to put it bluntly. Is there anything that we can do about that?
You can make a formal complaint to the zoning administrator, because you do have to keep your property in good repair. And it's, it goes beyond whether or not you want to, not everybody's a gardener.
No.
It goes beyond that, goes into housing values. Say you wanna sell your house and you live beside that house. So, are, do you think you're gonna get top dollar if you live beside this house?
Probably not.
No, they're gonna come there and they're gonna go, I like this house, but this neighbor looks troublesome. I don't wanna deal with that.
So, so if you file a complaint, is it anonymous, or, you know, I mean, should we do it as a group, or what?
I'm pretty sure that it is anon. I don't think that, I don't think that they, um-
They don't, but-
I don't think they tell people.
They don't, but I, I can tell you that it's non.
Is it non?
Even if, no, even if Lisa doesn't say it.
Yeah, I think she just, her job is to-
There's six of, six houses on my street.
Yeah.
If I, if, if I file, which has happened, if I file. I mean, she discreetly might send somebody out to see how it looks, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, but, and then she, it happened to me.
I forgot about that.
And then she reports back saying, ah, there's nothing we can do about it. I mean-
But what, what's that line that they cross? Like, if someone just doesn't take care of the area and it's a mess? It's subjective, right?
I think that's a community, well, I don't think it's subjective. I think there are, there are rules in, in the U D O.
Not specifically in terms of-
But you can't leave it.
What kind of-
No, not what kind of plant, something like that.
I mean, if it's a fire hazard, that kind of thing.
But can you have grass that's of, of foot tall?
It has to break the law.
What law? Is that a code?
Because I, I had a neighbor that, uh, contain, I mean, now they're, now their yard looks nice. But for, uh, uh, up until last year, they had like mountains of sand, because they were fix, they were forever trying to do something.
Okay.
And it looked terrible.
Notice section-
And she went out there and she told me that there's, there was nothing that they did.
This is a perfect example. This is code, not U D O.
Where are you?
So if you go to section nine-two in code, it says, property to be kept clean and in certain conditions declared nuisances. So, and it says, uncontrolled growth of weeds, vegetation or grasses to a height in excess of eight inches or any noxious weeds or vegeta, vegetation on any lot, dead tree fall, dead trees, broken trees, leaning trees. You can be cited under code for that.
Alloys of pine cones, how's that?
Well, and that, that's where there is some subjectivity.
Yeah.
But that's where you would go to your village administrator, which is Lisa,
Yeah.
and say, I'd like to make a complaint. This house is concerning me because my value of my home is not gonna hold. I'm not gonna get top dollar for my house if I felt like I wanna leave tomorrow, if this house looks like this. And if, if enough people complain, I believe that's where it becomes a nuisance, but that, again, I am out of my wheelhouse on that.
Okay.
That's what, this is in code. So they can be cited by the police department for a nuisance property.
So probably the best thing is just go to the-
Best thing to do is to go talk to Lisa or call her. You don't have to come up here, you can call and be like, hey, I, here's what I've got going on, and all of us have decided that do we need to make a formal complaint together or individually, what they need from us, but there is a house that's, that is, we feel becoming a nuisance under, you know, section nine-two of our, of our codes.
Okay, yes.
So, anytime you have a, a question about it, like, literally, I went to this search bar up here.
Yeah.
This is the fab, most fabulous site on the planet when it comes to this neighborhood. You go right there, all I did was type in grass height, to see if there were any grass height regulations.
Yeah.
Brought me right to part nine-point-two, which tells me that eight inches. Anything in excess of eight inches, which my field, this probably doesn't apply to me because I'm not in the village, but,
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I, I have a, my lavender, one section of my lavender field I have not mowed at all this season, so it is quite wild.
But we don't see it.
But you don't see it. And it's, it looks like a beautiful grassy field when you're not in the neighborhood. But, if you ever have a question like that, go to that search bar and, and try a couple different,
Yeah.
a couple different things and, and put that in there. That, that's always great information, and that might be a good place to start, just, when you're, what, anytime we get on a board, or we're, we're thinking about these zoning laws and zoning regulations and things that we can contribute, um, and ways to make it better in the community, we're always thinking from our own perspective, it's always introspective, that's a great place to start. So you can start searching in that search bar of things that you are concerned about, but care about. Um, and it will tell you everywhere in here that that is there.
Okay.
Um, and that's kinda, I went through this and just searched every one of these terms, and there were a couple of them that aren't there. But I agree with Teresa. We, I think it'd be great to go through, we have the time. Let's go through the whole thing and audit it.
This is part of the-
But, but it's not, it's also in terms of knowing, but we act, I don't know if this is what we're doing, the audit, but we're like, uh, because, the, the reason why I'm asking, I'm bringing this up is, I know that we started this with Mary at some point.
It was probably before I was on board.
Yes.
And I think, here's what I do believe, right before I came on board, the year before I came on board, you guys did a huge U D O overhaul, because when I moved here in twenty-twenty, the, my zone, um, back then I was-
But, but that's how it came out.
It wasn't already five, what was it, ETJ? So ETJ had its own set of U D O. It was far less regulatory. We were a lot more, a, a lot more free to, to manage our own property.
What's ETJ?
Uh, extrajurisdictional territory. That is all, it's, it's land outside of the village. It's, it's, it can be more than a mile, but ours, as I think about a mile or-
We went through this.
Actually, our, our ETJ was all the way to eleven to now.
Including clarification that, I guess, I, I wasn't reading it to the extent she was. But I guess through the years that she was involved, she came up with understanding when things were not clear. And I remember, because I made a note here, that, you know, we came with the appointment in terms of members, that it was like, the way it was written, it was not clear, so that was rewritten. So we went through, I mean, uh, uh, she, I mean, she actually, you know, read, read it way more than we did.
Well, then let me ask you this. Do you just want me to meet with Lisa, find out what her new updates are, and then go through myself and just point out the things that are problematic, because you've already done this?
Yes, yes, because otherwise it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. I mean, I was just planning to do it.
And, and so then, I guess I, uh, I don't, I hate to ask her to, uh-
I did not know that you guys had done that, but that's two years ago.
Yes, we did.
I mean, I, I've been on the board for two years, so.
We did. Uh, I mean, I have notes on it because-
But I do remember, um, distinctly, when I moved here in twenty-twenty, I do pay attention to codes, that's just, working with the county G I S, that was something I just learned to do years and years ago. So, um, when I moved here, I got a copy of the, of what applied to me, what, what my rules were within, you know, my area, what, what, what do I need to know about my property if I move here? So I looked at those rules, and then, um, shortly thereafter, they changed.
Hmm.
And those, you know-
Who changed them?
Um, the town changed them, the village changed them. Um, they absorbed the ETJ into the, the U D O, so it was no longer separate. Wasn't two separate things, um, and progressively became a little bit more stringent.
What would have prompted them to do that? They, they just wanted a more sophisticated-
Control.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem saying that.
But some, some of it was all came-
To control, so like what happens in the ETJ.
Some of it also came from meetings, like maybe with the county and-
Maybe.
But, okay, so, the reason why I'm saying is because, since they haven't gone through this, you know, going through the articles, it's like, for instance, the article-
But they could do that on there.
The article one just kind of introduces what the document is, and then in article two, it talks about the planning and zoning board, you know, the, the, how many members, the length of time, you know, then-
This is a lot of what we did in the training too.
Yeah, then it talks about, you know, other, we have a board of adjustment, so we became familiar with the board. There's a vacancy in the board of adjustment, I read, and we just went, you know, we just went through things like that and, and, uh- And we just went, you know, we just went through things like that and and. I mean, if you wanna, if it's okay with me if you don't wanna do it. I just think it's it's worth worthwhile understanding. What this document is. And then and then it starts. It starts in article.
I think you're giving us mixed signals.
Well, I mean, I I'm not gonna to tell you, I mean, I've already gone through it, so I know what's in it.
Now, I I definitely think everybody should go through it. But if you do not want to do, what from what I understood, what you just said a minute ago was you guys just did this audit process. Right before I got here and you've gone through the whole thing and you've done exactly what I was talking about doing. Was going through and making sure that there weren't redundancies, that there weren't um things missing out of the table of authorized uses.
But we actually did the table at the end.
I was here for the table, but there are still things missing in the table.
I think what would be helpful for me is how I obviously read that.
Yeah, I think.
For you to point out whatever you think is salient or.
Yeah.
So for Kimmy and myself, I think we need to have Lisa print this out and then we can read that, make our notes and. You know, duplications, this isn't clear, we need to add this and then have a conversation.
And you can learn the sections, like what. I I'll tell you, I think I've been in this general provision section one time since I've been on the board. And that was just to read over it, to see what was in it. That I've never messed around in again. The jurisdiction very rarely will change, authority doesn't change, purpose, this is all legalese. This is all, and most of that isn't set out by this board or even recommended by the board, it's recommended by the lawyer.
Okay, so at the very least, I think that in order to understand the things, right? Let's go to article six, which has the zoning.
I have to agree with that.
I explains all the different, you know.
I think that would help too. What all these mean. That's in article six. So let's go to article six in zoning. And we probably won't get too too deep in it tonight, but I think have Lisa print out the U D O for you. Have her print you off a table of authorized uses. It looks like a pain in the butt at first, but you, I promise it'll come together. But let's go ahead and look at the the zoning. We don't have to look at general. We know why there is a zoning, that's all legalese. But let's look down to the to the districts. The zoning maps, if you ever need to come in, like the building is open, I think until what time? Four o'clock every day and twelve on Friday?
I think it's five, five.
So what, sorry, what article are we on?
Um if you go to article six zoning.
Okay.
There is a six four is zoning map. All of the zoning maps are up here and they're just easy to get to here. I don't know that they that there are any maps. In the U D O that you can see online. Um but if you go to the zoning districts, that's twenty one, six, five. That explains every one of these districts that are at the top. That are really the the meat potatoes of your table authorized uses. So if you want to kind of marry that up in your head, if you look at that zoning map and you can get up and go look if you want. But there's like a a little key code in the bottom corner. You can look at each zone and where it is.
Might be updated because this, for instance, this first one, the MUN, we recreated that. It's a brand new one.
The MUN is there. It's the light purple. It's a lavender. They just updated that map.
They just updated.
Uh let me, hold on a second. I'll tell you what date that is. She just put that up there.
Okay.
Yeah, I know this is updated because she has this fixed now. Do they have a date on this? No. I thought maybe there'd be a date of when this was done, but I know it's new and all the MUN is actually all in there.
So I don't see any maps in this.
There are any?
No.
Okay, so those are the only maps that we have.
I I told you wrong. MUN is red. It's this, this is the MUN color.
Yeah.
I thought that was it, but that's that's not that.
What's that MUN where you figure is now? Is that the general store or what?
This is where we are right now. MUN is municipal buildings that belong to the village. So we're at the village hall and then this lot next to us is a vacant lot.
Okay.
And then this is the park.
Yeah.
And then this is a well site.
Where's the general store? Oh, I see.
General store is right here.
Yeah.
Well, I have news for you. I'm looking at the document online and it does not have MUN. In the in in article six five.
The the map is under forms and documents.
Forms and documents.
So the actual document, the actual document has not been updated.
So this, well, is it, hold on a second. Go to, is it ratified to be doc? It it was ratified, so it should have been updated.
It's not showing on the actual.
This is what I'm talking about. These are little things that we need to, yeah, tell them.
Hold on, because my understanding is that they pay a company only once in a blue moon. And they only do to to update it.
I thought Lisa did the updates. I had, I didn't, I've never heard that.
Actual codify whatever.
Alright, I'm gonna ask her. Who does the updates and how often? Because it's gonna be redundant for us to keep sa- I mean, what if six months from now? We've already told her about it and it's still not done.
We updated the map with the the table.
Yeah.
So the table has been updated. Maybe she did it. But my understand, see this Munich code codification? The one that it says Foxfire Village Munich Code.
I I think that that Munich code codification is not, I thought.
But it it is.
That's a software.
Okay, I understand, but I, my understanding, maybe I misunderstood. That it was the, that it was actually done by an outside company.
Alright, I'm gonna ask her who does the updates and how.
Is not here. And the zoning district is not here.
So table on twenty one, six, five, no MUN.
Oh, it is there, it is, oh, I'm sorry, it is here on the list, but it's not on the top here.
Where are you, show me where you're looking at.
Okay, so.
It's in the, it's down here.
Hold on, hold on, maybe it is, hold on.
I don't see it in the chart.
It says zoning districts. And then there's this table. It shouldn't be, MUN shouldn't be on there?
Are you looking at the?
I'm looking at at this table.
Yes, and I'm agreeing with you. There is no MUN there.
Alright, but then if you go down. To the text.
It is there in the text. Maybe she fixes the text and they fix the.
I saw it. Okay, it's number fourteen.
Okay.
And this list after part.
So it is, it is there, yeah.
District is established as a zoning district for village owned property in which, okay, but why?
Was done the thirteenth of February twenty twenty four.
Okay, and why isn't it on this?
This is exactly what I was talking about with the topic. This case in point.
Alright.
But while what we were, I guess, want to see when we go to this is so you can go through this and see every single district. And then as you get more familiar with the districts, you'll also see a a building chart. That tells you setbacks for each of the districts. You'll see this is a very big thing because it tells you all the things that can, A is for allowed. And blank means it's not allowed. So in your table of authorized uses, if you, you know, you can go down to accessory building. That's allowed and everywhere except for a MUN and. I think that's on R M, yes. Residential multi dwelling. So this is a good place to to really understand what is and is not allowed. And where, how. Are vapes a tobacco establishment?
What is?
I said, is a vape a tobacco establishment?
That's new.
Cause if I look at tobacco establishment, it's not allowed except for in. What is a tobacco establishment? Tobacco is it?
Then you place next to the general store.
That is a vape store, isn't it?
What does a MUN stand for?
Municipal.
If you look, if you look at that list, it's it has a, not on the actual chart. But if you scroll down, after P U D, you find municipal, it's there. Now, out of out of curiosity. I know that we had, that we went through this appointment in terms of members.
Where is V B D? Yeah.
In article two. And we found that this didn't make sense.
Okay.
And but I'm looking at it and it says the same thing.
It's not been changed.
Because it says appointments have been made for staggered terms of three years, but members may continue so until their successors are being appointed. Initially, okay, two members who reside in the village. Okay, but what we were, what we found out is that this was the language that was here. When we first, when they first started, which doesn't make sense. As you go on, because there's no initially two members who reside shall be appointed. I mean, when they first started.
Yeah.
Okay, we had a problem with somebody that replaced somebody else. And we had this confusion in terms of, I think it was Rick actually. Uh you know, confusion as to how many, how long, when or whatever, but it was because.
Uh who was the guy that was here? He left because his mom had some issues.
Okay, so maybe it was him, baby was here.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
He was trying to get out of his.
Initially, two members who reside in the village shall be appointed for three terms, year terms. One member who resides in the village and one member who resides in the E T J. Shall be appointed for two year terms and one member who resides in the village started for a one year term. And nobody is, nobody is here for a one year term.
No.
Okay, so this language, which is, was never.
Changed.
Changed and we meant to change it.
Alright, so let me check with Lisa and find out who does the, and when did you think that happened?
Well, that happened when we were going through the.
That's gotta be at least a year and a half ago.
More than that.
Yeah, it's gotta be maybe a year and a half.
But the point is that this language is not, I mean, this one year term is very confusing because we don't have. So he was, so he was appointed for a one year term. Which does not make sense because nobody's up, they're either three or two years or whatever, something.
You know what else?
When they first started this, they didn't, you know, because so that initially. You had this going until, but now it doesn't make any sense at all.
Is this for the planning and zoning board?
Yes.
Okay, so when I met with Lisa last year to come on board, she had indicated that they want you to at least commit to a year.
Two years.
Okay, so.
At least commit to two years. And I know that sounds like a long time. It's twelve meetings a year. It's not that bad. And you'll have to make everyone, we realize everybody has lives. But you barely scratched the surface of this board in one year. You've been on the board months. But you've only been to, you know, you've only gotten to so many meetings and that's just the way of life. We don't expect everybody to be at every meeting. So you, with one, let's say you only do a year, you make nine meetings in a year, how are you supposed to know what's going on? I didn't really know what was going on until maybe.
Okay. So can you check with her because this doesn't make.
I, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna check with Lisa on who does the updates and how often it's done. Also, where are the updates that we made?
Well, I mean, so far I'm catching two of them.
Where, well, I just caught a third. V B D is not on this.
You should, you should.
There's no V B D.
Okay, there you go. So so we we need to find out what happened because I didn't keep this, okay? I can, I mean.
And I don't have a track of the, Mary has a track of where everything was changed.
Because she was, she's very well organized.
Yes.
So and I bet you she didn't delete it from.
No, I'm sure, I I know.
So so she, she gave you.
Yes, she's very detail oriented. She would have not got rid of anything.
Idea for her to give you.
I'm gonna send Mary an email.
Of all the changes that were supposed to be made to the U D O.
Before, okay.
So that we we can go over those.
Yeah, just to make sure they're there and then we can also look for anything.
We're like, I mean, we just started and.
Yeah, we barely scratched the surface. We have three. So I, I mean, I think the audit is warranted, for sure. Um there's no V B D here. We don't even have a C Z zone, do we? What's a C Z zone?
I don't know, what is it?
Was that, was that the old commercial zone? Is that what it was called? We changed that to V B D last year or the, yeah, it was last year. So, okay, but now the C Z is not here.
What did you say that it's not?
V B D is not here.
Yeah, there's a V B, but not a V B D.
V B D was the village business district. That's what we said. We were gonna change MUN to MUN and V B D for village business district. And C Z is here, but not, well, there is a V B, but what is V B?
V B is village business district. I think that you better get from Mary that they're selling.
So that, what is C Z then?
Well, it's a village business district.
C Z is conditional.
The, yeah.
That's conditional.
V B says that the village business district is established to accommodate.
Don't you remember saying V B D? It's on, it's V B D on the map. That's what we had said a year ago.
I don't remember.
I do remember that. But V B is on this, V B is on this, but V B D is on that map. So we gotta get it all together. Make, that's what we need it to come together and be all correct.
Understand the difference between the V B D and MUN.
The difference in the V B D and the MUN is MUN is what is owned by the municipal departments. So it's everything owned by just Foxfire.
But it's the same, but that's what it is here. The village business, oh, no.
Not village business district.
No.
Vill- village, village business district is separate. And to keep in mind, I tripped up on this for a while. The golf course is not in the village business district. That is in the recreational district. So that was a, that tripped me up for a good three, four months. I was like, what? How do we, that is a business. But it's in the village recreational district and then you also have a village dis- business district that would be like the general store. If somebody started a boutique.
Okay, so I I even brought up when it was first, when it first came up. That it threw me off because coming from Los Angeles, for me recreational was parks.
Anything that is.
Kind of, okay.
I'm coming off because if you're making a profit, it's a business.
Okay, so me, to me, the golf is a private entity.
Right.
So I don't see it as recrea- I mean, personally, unless there's a, there's a, there is a designation for recreational private. And recreational.
There is not. There's recreational district. Um let's read recreational district real quick.
Because I, for me, you know, I mean, recreational when I, where I came from was parks and, you know. Parks and recreations, things that were public, like the tennis courts and stuff.
R D.
Were all public.
Go to eight. Recreational district is established to accommodate privately and publicly owned recreational facilities. Both manmade and natural. The district is designed and intended to encourage the preservation of and continued use of land for recreation purposes. So I do see the difference.
Okay, but then we have a a park that has a a walk, has some.
But that's not recreational. That belongs to the community, so it's MUN. I I do get the distinction there because it belongs to Foxfire. There are lots of recreational facilities that might not belong to Foxfire. It could belong to any private entity.
What is the pool? The pool is under MUN?
The pool is MUN, yes. I see a red one in the middle.
That we have a municipal district, I think, now I feel different.
Yeah. And I can see why it's different.
There was no money.
That's true. Um I can see too why it would be different for R D than V B D or V B. I I still don't understand how we got from V B D to V B. Because the whole time we were discussing it was V B D.
It wasn't V B and now there's a V B D.
Okay.
And what's, but it, but it's still on on the table and it's.
Well, on the new map, it says V B D. And then here.
So it shouldn't be in the text on this table here.
And here anywhere.
Is the new coffee shop now considered the business? Is the new coffee shop now considered the business district?
That is a, that triangle, that whole, if you look up there, that whole, that lavendary color is VBD. So that would be like, see the triangle up there, Foxfire Road and Hoffman Road? Right in, there you go, up, 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 up to your right, down. Go, you're going fast. You go super fast. Um so this is the triangle here. This is Foxfire Road, Hoffman Road, this is the triangle, this whole triangle is VBD.
Okay, but so now this throws you.
This is also on VBD.
So Tasha, now it throws you off because that has residential in there too.
There is a residential in there, and I brought that up whenever we talked about the VBD. However, if that residence is ever torn down. First of all, it's a rental, so it's not, it's not, it's not a real residence, I guess, but.
But you, but it is.
But if it gets torn down, that property can't be re- you can't build another house there.
Can you go to mixed-use property?
Uh it might be, did we talk about mixed-use? I thought we did, yeah, I thought we did talk about, I would love to see some mixed-use, I love mixed-use properties. And they always, 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 always end up looking very quaint and villagey and wonderful, and they promote walking traffic. I I'm a big proponent of mixed-use and and. Commercial with little apartments and coffee shops and bookshops.
Very European.
It is very European. Um so I think we did talk about that.
I think that the one thing that I'm now, of being here for seven years. I'm uh I'm opposed to is the fact that the anchor places that are the entrance to our community are an eyesore. And so that one would be one, because it should be to me something that is, oh, how nice. The same thing with now in my corner where I, every time I come out of my house and I wanna go anywhere, I have a parking lot there. I'm talking about the kind of golf course, yes, the day they approved before my time today.
Yeah, the maintenance facility. So here's my thing, I.
But it's it's a, it's a nicer to me because it is literally a parking lot, almost uh all, every day, all day long.
We set new rules that were voted on by the council, and they were adopted by the council.
So those sorts of.
Those new rules should go into effect the moment that changes hands, which is June one.
I don't know, but that is disappointing, it's disappointing because the two, you know, the two corners, that one, that's kind of one entrance. And the other one is another kind of entrance. Are. Are so.
I'm looking at the table.
It it, in other words, you know what what it tells me, it's like a rundown place.
Is that where they store all the golf course equipment? Is that what you're talking about, that corner?
I mean, it's. Yes, but they repaired, they do all this repair.
Well, it looks like they added a lot more agriculture around, you know, the hot, things that are gonna grow higher. I don't think it looks as bad as it did a year ago, when it was just pretty empty and.
I haven't looked at it.
And where, where, you drive out of there every day to most.
Yeah, well, not every day, but if I go to, if I go to Aberdeen, I go the back way on.
Well, I do. Okay, well, I I drive right over there and it's like, oh my god, I I wanna cover up my eyes, because it used, it was really nice before.
I think it was open before, there was no maintenance facility right there on the road, I don't know what was the driving force behind that, having the maintenance facility.
I mean, it's.
Right at the entrance on here.
Okay, but I, but we're talking about maintenance facility that stores all those golf carts outside, so they're all sitting outside.
But that was something that shouldn't have thought, that was something that was thought about by the council.
Yeah, then there's the car, the cars, some people, the cars are the people that work there.
When they approved it. Again.
Plus, by now, it's a home, I mean, today, I would say there were like eight cars there, how many, why, why do you need eight cars in there?
But who approved it?
Well, it was before my time.
The council approved it.
It's some, but you know, so far, some part deal that I don't know what they got out of it.
And if they approved it, it's the same council as that.
It's perspective, you live in a golf community, you just, that's the way it is.
I think it could have been placed other places, but we also weren't involved in the decision, so.
Well, what about this place on Richmond on the right-hand side between these two new homes, it's like a big storage facility, what the heck is that? That's not very aesthetically appealing either.
I think that is. I don't know who that belongs to, is that along the golf course?
Is that prior to the property?
Which one?
The maintenance facility that's on Richmond Road, it's right across from my sister's house.
But I don't go that way, so I really.
On the right-hand side going towards you.
Yep, and it's right behind the store.
I don't go that much that way, there's no reason.
It's like, um.
There's a big chain link fence, you know, it's.
I was gonna say, for the longest time, that fence was pretty, in fairly good shape, so it was like, it kind of like, when they had it closed, you really couldn't see what was back there.
Yeah.
Um but I don't know who that belongs to, I'll have to find out.
Which is interesting because that's on a residential street, so how does that?
There's a lot, let's think about when this community was built, the the earliest homes here were in the late seventies, early eighties.
Yes, my home, my home was there.
When there were no zoning laws, it was the wild, wild west, and people just did whatever the wild, wild west does. We gotta remember while we're doing this, we're retrofitting. We're re- we're trying to ask something from the nineteen seventies to look like something from eighteen ninety-five. That has gone through this process already back in the early nineteen hundreds. Pinehurst went through this in the early nineteen hundreds, in the nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties, it was a wild, wild west in Pinehurst, then Annie Oakley shooting skeets out.
Yeah.
I mean, it it was pretty wild for a little bit of, that was actually earlier, I think, yeah, maybe around nineteen twenty, nineteen ten. Um but we're very, we're young. In the fact that we have not gone through this retrofit process, we have not gone through a turnover of homes where homes. Have gone through the process of, okay, now they're dilapidated, they're no longer viable, they're gonna get torn down, now we have a new lot and new homes. We have, we're so young, we haven't gone through that process yet. So we're just young enough to have gone through the fact that this was the wild, wild west with no zoning. And we're seeing the benefit of that, which means that that maintenance facility has been there since I was sixteen. I do know that, so that's been there since at least ninety-four. That's when I, I got my license in ninety-five, so ninety-five, I do remember that being there. Um or something of that, the fence may not have been there, but I think the building was there. Um I know the general store was there because it used to stop and get gas there.
Oh, wow.
Cause it used to have gas pumps. It's the only place between here and Richmond County that you could get gas.
Yeah, that is so cool.
So. This is what we're, we're retrofitting something, and we're doing a good job of it, I don't think we should be frustrated with it, but.
It's exciting.
It is exciting, and we have an opportunity to to make things nice, but not, also not make it Pinehurst, where you can't, you know. I don't want it to be where everybody walks out of their house and their neighbor goes.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, I'm calling Lisa. Yeah, I I don't, I don't think that's what anybody can do.
Okay, so that, you you brought that up, okay, so that's the situation that we have on my board. Is that every, everybody has a little something.
A little something going on?
So, you know, so you don't wanna, you know, and we wanna be neighborly, you know.
Yeah.
The guy that I'm talking about, he's got a truck there that he's always working on, and the hood is up and it's like. You know, okay, so his car looks better now, but but if I, if, I think that that's how it came when I first moved. That some, we we have some snoops that go around looking for.
I will tell you, every neighborhood, and I and I know from experience because um I, when I lived in Seven Lakes West, there was one neighbor. And I always knew when he was making the runs, he lived two houses down from me, and he would get, it was like, it was his job. He just loved.
They get on the golf, golf cart and go run.
Loved, loved, loved. He would get on his golf cart, and, oh wait, he got better, he had one of these uh like two thousand and three digital camera. And he had on a little thing, a loop, and he would tie it to his hand, and he'd have his coffee in one hand, his little digital camera on his wrist. And he'd go out and he's getting his golf cart, he would ride around the neighborhood looking for infractions. And he would send a picture, he'd make an email, and send it, so it's every neighborhood, I get that.
So I I I just didn't understand, I, my shed is sitting, you can't see it from the street, okay, sitting back there. And I, and you know, and I didn't know the situation with the trash cans, I was gone for a while, I come back. And you know, there's my daughter-in-law says, they have just some papers on the door, so they were like, not necessarily deciding me, but giving me.
A little warning, hey.
So but and they came up, the shed that didn't have the, the skirt at the bottom or whatever it was. Which mine is sitting so close to the ground.
I don't think I remember that one.
Well, it's, and you know, it didn't have, the lady that 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 put, that put the shed there, that I put the house from her, didn't have anything. But it's really like this much from the ground, so it's like, but in order to see it, you have to be on the property.
Have to be back there.
No, you can't see it.
I don't think anybody's doing that, and I I honestly, I think we we live in a a much nicer neighborhood than.
So. When you, when someone finds out, they can say, you know, that's something.
Pride grounds, like, no. I think most ninety percent of people in the neighborhood are live and let live people.
Complaining, looking, ah. Yeah.
And it, it's a little different when you have something like one house on one street that, you know, and you don't know what their issue is, even if you're being the gen-.
And you start guessing.
Well, I'm.
But you can ask her. You can ask her to send something.
Maybe not be physically able to take care of your yard, maybe the neighbors get together and help them out.
Take them. Because I do. Lisa says, if you wanna write a complaint, I said, no, I'm not writing any complaint, but can you say?
But, yeah. For our purposes.
And then she responded, there's nothing we can do about it because they're not doing anything that is.
Nicer. More killing for everybody that we can.
That's my thing, yeah.
And we're not gonna make everybody happy, but if we can hit most of the people in the belphur. You know, there'll be some outliers that aren't ever happy, but there, I mean, we can hit most of the neighborhood and make it nice, and our values stay where they are, and make it a. A pleasing place for people to come to, it doesn't have to be Pinehurst, I don't think, I don't even want it to be Pinehurst.
You don't want it to be Aberdeen, no.
Okay, Tasha, it seems.
No, I agree with that.
I I'm bringing up.
No storage facilities.
Okay.
No trace.
It seems to me like, uh, sorry to put it on you.
No, you're fine.
That we need to gather some information.
Yeah, I've got in my notes.
Before we move on to this, number one, I think maybe notes from Mary to find out what the changes. Cause I'm pretty, she's very well organized, so I'm pretty sure she has a, in a form that you can get something from her.
Yep.
You can ask Lisa.
And second, uh, can do.
Yeah, I'll ask her to do two sets.
To do.
Yeah. Oh, well, they're gonna do that, I'm gonna ask Lisa who does the updates, how often they're done, and find out where the disconnect was.
You know, I'll I'll come.
Cause it sounds like this is not the only disconnect there was, they have been, you know, we had a whole piece of property up there that wasn't on the zoning map properly.
Okay, I'll just send her an email.
Yeah, just give her our names.
That was from way back when, I wanna avoid that.
I think that, I I think that if we have something that is, you know, like clear as to what is it, we'll do a better job rather than.
Yeah, and my biggest thing is I don't want, I don't want somebody to come in and and do the work. And go read the manuals and read the U D O, and then look at the table of uses and things don't match up, the zonings aren't right, that's our job.
I thought, actually, I thought that we did, that we, that that we worked on that.
I thought we did too.
We brought it up to date, so.
Well, we'll have to che- check with Lisa, and I'll check with, I'll check with Lisa and with Mary and and get Mary's records on it. And then find out like where, what do we need to start with, and then we can start, and I don't think it'll be a long drawn-out process. I know Lisa has some things that are pressing, we'll probably put that in front of our little audit process. Um but I think we got a good start, and I think you guys certainly have a better understanding of what this is, how to access it, and then what certain things mean. Um and never be afraid to ask questions, there are no dumb questions, um because there are so, there's so many foreign things here. There's a lot of acronyms, then where do you find it, you can go, you know, just that search bar is wonderful, it's be able to go on that.
Well, there are children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That digital, um you know, the digital U D O and search it and be able to pull things up from it is a, is a huge help.
Just glancing through this, I didn't realize it was so detailed and complicated.
It is very, very detailed and very complicated, and I I don't think it needs to be complicated, I think what we did with the fencing is a great example. Of how we can do a better job as a board to suggest things to the council that make life livable and easier to understand, like. If I'm working forty, sixty hours a week, I just moved to the neighborhood, I got three kids in school, I got a husband who just deployed. Do you think I'm gonna sit down and read this U D O? Absolutely not. But I should be able to go, oh my gosh, I'd really love to have a fence to keep these rug rats from running into the street, fence. And I put that in, and then all of a sudden I have this beautiful thing that comes up.
Yeah.
That shows me pictures, you know, how to, how to do the calculations, definitions, yes.
Well, it'll be made clear to anybody too.
Right.
They come to the meeting and just ask the question.
Yeah, I I wish more people would come to these meetings too, um I, I think more people come to the, to the board, or to the.
Probably.
Mm-hmm, city council meeting.
Well, yeah, the council meetings, they act, well, the council holds the power, the council makes decisions, they're the decision makers. So if you're gonna go somewhere and make a suggestion, you're gonna wanna talk to decision makers.
Yeah. Right.
And I, like, if I wanted to put in a pool, I wouldn't go to the council meeting necessarily.
Right. No, no.
I'd start with Lisa.
I'd go to Lisa, we really don't, we we really, our job is to suggest changes.
Recommendations.
Council, yeah, we make recommendations.
So Kim, I'm gonna send an email to Lisa to ask her to print the U D O and the building chart for us, so we can read through that, so next month's meeting.
Okay.
And this table of authorized uses.
Okay, oh, I've got that written down too, so three things, one, two, three, yeah.
And if you don't mind, once she agrees, just let me know when she's gonna have.
Yeah, I'll send the email to also indicate when it's ready, so we can come in and pick it up. Cause I'd like to have that fully read through before next month's meeting.
Yeah, I I think that would be, um, that's a good starting point, I think we'd be good.
Okay, we're adjourned at seven, I won't go adjourned.